That's exactly.
Local, please. Chairman O'Gorod, here. Mr. Vanda.
Here.
Mr. Jordano is not present. Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Mayor Melham.
Here.
Ms. Nittelford is not present. Mr. Veniero is not present. Mr. Van Gary is not present. Mr. Gaius.
Here.
Mr. He Lorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Mariello.
Here.
Everyone will stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where we stand on the ground in the visible liberty and justice of this world. Slutshon notes. Pursuant to what requirements of open public meeting that chapter 231 PL 1975 noted at this meeting was published in the March 28, 2023 edition of the Star Letter. There are any communications? Not at this time. Comments from the chair. I would just like to remind everyone after our last meeting that we need to make sure we get accurate minutes and please always speak when you're full. Thank you. Approve all minutes? We don't have any? No, for next meeting. Bill list for April 5, 2023?
I'll make a motion. Thank you.
Chairman O'Gorod.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
And Mr. Gaius.
Yes.
There's no resolutions to be memorialized or any new business at the time, so proceed to the application before the board, PB 2209, which is 81 Steenestreet.
Are you ready to proceed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Marmora for the applicant Quick Check Corporation. This is the project that's been long in coming, as I'm sure you know. It's at the intersection of Rutgers and Corbin, block 9403, lot 181 Steenestreet. We've worked exceedingly hard, as I'm sure the mayor knows and also as Pucci Carter can confirm, we are now a fully compliant application, fully compliant with your redevelopment plan. So we are not seeking any variances. Oh, I'm very sorry. Okay. We're not seeking any variances or any relief from the redevelopment plan, which is actually referred to as the school one, a school number one redevelopment plan. So I'm representing Quick Check this evening. Part of the application is a minor subdivision. A portion of the property facing Academy Street will be subdivided off. That will come before you separately. We're not the fee owner. Well, the fee owner is actually the municipality, but you will be conveying that to the previously designated redevelopment O N R, Urban Renewal Corporation. Let me check with the stenographer. All of that is on the record.
We're good.
So the redevelopment plan was amended after originally adopted to request that a portion be reserved for residential development. We are not presenting that. We, as Quick Check, have nothing to do with that. That will be coming in the subsequent application, but part of our application is the subdivision to facilitate that. So what we are here to discuss tonight, there is that subdivision. I don't want to lose sight of that because we do need approval for that so we can go forward with having that perfected at the county planning board and also recording the map that will need to be recorded for that. But this is focused on, as far as a site plan, only on the Quick Check part of the application. Our engineer is parking and making his way here, so before he gets here, you will hook up to your HMGI system. But I'd like to introduce Rich Lamont. He is from Quick Check. He can explain to you what is being proposed. Also, Rich has been working with the municipality here for about five years on this project. So I'd like to then introduce Mr. Lamont. Your name and record, please.
We might as well just swear you in for the record.
Sure.
Can you swear to testimony? Should give us the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth? I do. Please give us your name and business interests. Yes. My name is Richard Lamont. I'm director of real estate for Quick Check, 300 Highway 28 in White House Station, New Jersey.
Okay. And Mr. Lamont, would you explain to the board basically what your relationship is to this project and your history with the municipality on this project?
Sure. As the director of real estate, part of my job is to find new sites. We became familiar with this site back in, I believe, 2016, when we learned that it was going to be the subject of redevelopment effort by the town. We've certainly been interested in it, and I can't tell you how happy we are to be here after so many years and presenting what we believe is a fully compliant plan.
Okay. And could you explain what the project would consist of?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's always nice when we go to a town that already has a Quick Check because I'm sure that everybody's familiar with our store. I do, I'm obligated to give you some of our history, but I won't bore you all the way back to the 1800s, but Quick Check has been a family-owned business for over 50 years. Our birth was in the food service, I mean, dairy business. That led to food service and ultimately gas. We opened our first store in Denali, New Jersey in 1967, and then we did our first gas store in West Amel, New Jersey in the year 2000. So we currently have 158 stores and 98 of them offer gasoline. In January of '21, people may have heard since it happened in the middle of this process that we were purchased by Murphy USA, which is a large public company. They are a convenience store operator based in Arkansas, and I have to tell you that I'm very pleased that they share our values and our vision for delivering convenience and high-quality food service to our customers. So we're going to proceed with this development of Quick Check as a Quick Check with nothing any different, except we have new owners. We can no longer say that we are a family-owned business, but we do not franchise any of our stores, and that's important to say because that allows us to have the consistency of operation, maintenance, training, the goods and services that we offer. It's all run out of our White House Station Support Center, as it has been for over 50 years now.
So if I could just interrupt for a second. In other words, the employees, I know you're going to talk about the number of employees, but those employees would all be employees of the corporation itself?
Yes, absolutely. Everyone is trained in our support center in White House Station, and they're all employees of Quick Check. I also always like to mention that we take a lot of pride in the communities that we are in. The majority of our employees will be bell-built residents. We encourage them all to be active in the community. We pride ourselves in helping the community during difficult times. We kept all of our stores open all through COVID, and we certainly have a lot of great stories coming from our stores during Hurricane Sandy and more recent Hurricane Ida. We really take a lot of pride in being part of the community and supporting first responders and the community during hard times. So I'm going to drill down into some of the details that I know ultimately everyone will be asking about. You may be familiar with this store. We call it Number 14, but on 501 Washington, the corner of Washington and Little Street, which I'm sure you guys know better than me. That store was opened in 1995, and it is coming to the end of its lease. So this provides an opportunity for us to stay in the community and expand our operation. That store is 2,930 square feet, and the store we're proposing at the new location will be 4,536 feet. So that is an increase in size of about 1,600 square feet. This is going to allow us to expand our food offering and also put some of our innovations into the store. We have self-service checkout lines, which is a big hit in a lot of our stores, and we're going to be able to expand our menu because, as you can imagine, a smaller store, we have to make decisions about what products we don't have room for and what we're going to sell. We are going to be offering fuel. That's a big change, obviously. This has become pretty fundamental to convenience store operation nowadays. In fact, we won't operate a store, we won't build a new store anymore without gasoline because it has become the new norm. And it's actually said by the National Association of Convenience Stores that 80% of fuel in the country is sold at convenience stores. It's become the new normal for convenience stores to offer gasoline.
That's a great question.
Yes, I'm interactive. May I enter the chair? Interactive. I like, instead of holding it. So you said something about Washington and Little. When that lease ends, I guess you're going to fold into the one.
Well, there'll be two completely separate property transactions. When our lease is done at that location.
It closes.
It closes as a Quick Check. I'm not at liberty to talk about what the landlord's doing in the future, but I will tell you this, he has another tenant.
So my question is, it's Quick Check's property?
No, we're just a tenant.
You're a tenant.
As we will be a tenant at this location.
And you have that lease for a certain.
At that location.
I know it's separate, what we're talking about.
It's not unusual for, it's not unusual for a lease term to be 20 years, 30 years, 20 years with extensions. So that's just how, that's how it played out, that it's coming up on about 30 years. The landlord has another tenant. We're desirous of moving to another location that we believe is better, obviously for obvious reasons.
I'm just looking, I'm forward-thinking for, with that thought. Okay.
Sure. And then, like I said, I can't, I can't, it's not my place to talk about any details, but I will tell you this, I understand he has another tenant ready to go, so I don't think there's any concern that that building is going to sit vacant.
Thank you.
And Mr. Donatelli is your redevelopment counselor.
Yes.
One of the conditions of this approval would be to enter a redevelopment agreement with the township, and we have to demonstrate site control for the period of the, so it's a minimum of 30, 30 years, but I believe we have site control beyond that.
Thank you very much. Okay.
So this is a ground lease?
Yes.
You're responsible for everything, the structure, the grounds, everything.
The roofs leaking?
We'll be, yeah, Quick Check will be doing all the construction and we'll maintain.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So I started to say we're going to be doing fuel, and obviously there'll be a lot of questions about that, but we very much think of ourselves as a food service provider, and that certainly is our focus. And I always want to list the things we do because I think it's important to distinguish ourselves from other convenience stores. So we're going to, this store is going to expand on things we're already doing, fresh brewed coffee, handcrafted drinks, made order sandwiches, baked goods, made fresh every day, soup bar, salad and produce with healthy choices. And then we have a huge assortment of drinks, which will only get bigger. We have the new fee ATMs and lottery. And we'll be providing a few seats outside the building for everyone's convenience. Learned through COVID that that's a pretty useful thing to have, so we'll have that as well. But all of this is designed to be a one-stop shop convenience location for everybody. Sorry, thank you. That's all right. So anyway, let me, I'm going to start drilling down to some more specific details. Our building that we're proposing is going to be 4,536 square feet, and our architect will speak about it a little bit more detail, but we really do love our building. We combine a lot of high-quality materials, a lot of brick on the building and the gas canopy, and we think it has a clean and bright appearance that kind of conveys that freshness and that welcoming that we're looking for. So we really like our building, and you'll learn more about that. Talking about operations now, and you'll see I'm going to drill down to more and more detail. We understand that this location will not be able to operate 24/7. We will operate according to the guidance from the redevelopment ordinance. The store will open at 5:00 in the morning and will close at 1:00 a.m. So we will not be a 24/7 operation. We will have an extensive camera system that covers virtually every inch of the site. It is very customary for us to reach out to the police when we develop a new store to make sure they understand our video system and how they can have access to it if need be, in virtually every community. So we're very open with the police in what we're proposing. And we'll also always have three team members at the store, no matter what hour it is, as a minimum, so there's a higher level of surveillance and, you know, monitoring of things going on in the site. There are certainly other security protocols that we would prefer not to discuss in public, but suffice it to say we have a lot of protocol on cash handling and things like that that go on in the drives. Regarding our fuel, in New Jersey, obviously, it'll be an attended system. We have a very sophisticated system. We have double-wall tanks and virtually every part, and I'm not an engineer, but I will explain what I know. Virtually every part of the system has a double wall, the pipes, the tanks, everything has a double wall, and that spacing between the two tanks is monitored, so it's, you know, state-of-the-art as far as safety because there's vapor recovery functions that work. Actually, some of them are now integral to the car, some of them are integral to the pumps, and actually the delivery truck also has things that recover vapor. I always like to say, it's kind of anecdotal, but I, I think modern equipment at gas stations now is so advanced, I don't remember the last time I smelled gas at a gas station. I know back in the day, you would get a tank of gas and your car would smell like gas for the next two hours, but those days are long behind us with this expectation of these systems. They're continually monitored and regularly inspected, including central monitoring that goes back to our home office and our health desk that's on full 24/7. And there's extensive protocol for reporting and inspections and things that are dictated to us by the DEP. So suffice it to say, this is a state-of-the-art system that we share no expense. We will be offering diesel fuel, and it's important to note that this is low-flow diesel. And the distinction there is that it is a low-volume pump that's designed to serve cars and small trucks, pickup trucks, that are diesel. It is not intended to service tractor-trailers. Tractor-trailers go to stations where there's high-volume pumps that pump at a much greater pace. We are not designed to accommodate tractor-trailers. We don't welcome them, we don't promote them, and we actually will shoot them away if they come onto the site to get fuel because they frankly dump up the whole works because they're so big. That's not to say, and our engineer will talk about circulation for our own deliveries, which we have carefully thought out, but none of that is, you know, meant to accommodate tractor-trailers, so there should be no fear there. Also, our team members are highly trained with the whole fueling operation and the receiving of deliveries. They are trained on how to address minor incidents that happen with careless people. They're trained to recognize major incidents. They have equipment on site to handle any little minor things, and they are highly trained. They're also subject to a system of certification that the DEP puts out. It's kind of a, and I don't know the details of it, but it's an ABC system where there's different levels of certification, and you need to have certain levels to do certain functions on site. So that is also very highly regulated and carefully monitored. I want to mention storage of chemicals because I think it came up in a comment memo somewhere. We do, you know, we're not a repair shop. We don't store any chemicals, so there should be no concern about that. Anything that we, you know, beyond our merchandise, we don't have stockpiles of any kind of dangerous chemicals or anything like that. So just wanted to throw that out there. And we also, again, a reference to some comments, we understand that outdoor storage is not allowed here. It's not part of what we normally do, so there should be no fear that we're going to have, you know, pallets of soda out by the pumps. That's not the kind of thing that we do. Talking about deliveries, we have a dedicated loading zone for store merchandise that's in the back of the store. We control the timing and the frequency of these deliveries. Our engineer will talk about how the site is designed to accommodate WB50 trucks, so circulation is thought out very carefully. And by having a designated receiving area for the store, it allows us to keep those trucks separate from our customers and circulation of our customers so that they add safety to it. They can pull right in and right out without any kind of crazy maneuvering or any backing up with beepers or anything like that. And, yeah, our fuel deliveries, frequency of those is typically one a day. So we say usually six to eight a week. So it's an on-demand system that, where the system basically talks to the supplier so they come on an as-needed basis, which is very important. We've learned that through storms and things, how important it is to always have the tanks topped off. So that's a very, very reliable system to make sure the tanks are always full. The deliveries take about 20 to 25 minutes, and it's a completely silent operation. The truck turns off because it's gravity-driven, so there's no pumps, there's no noise or anything like that. So that is essentially happening once a day. The stores also will typically get one tractor-trailer a day to restore, so a similar number, approximately six to eight a week. We have two different carriers, one that carries groceries and one that carries refrigerated items, so between the two of them, we have those scheduled. And again, those are, those are unloaded by hand. We have no mechanized equipment or anything, so there's no beepers, there's no forklift trucks, there's none of that. It's all delivered by hand. We also have smaller box trucks that come a little more frequently, sometimes as much as five or six in a single day, but those are much smaller trucks that frankly come and go probably mostly unnoticed because they are, you know, not the larger tractor-trailers. Garbage and recycling, we're always asked about. We use a private hauler for that. We have pickups that are generally about two, three times a week, a front-loading truck. We have two six-yard dumpsters. One is for trash and the other is for commingled recycling, and they're enclosed in a masonry structure that our engineer will talk about. Our staff typically will have 30 to 50 employees at the store. Typically, we say we're creating 30 to 50 new jobs, but in this particular case, we're going to give all the people from our existing store the opportunity to transfer over, so we'll ultimately have 30 to 50 people on the staff to service the store this size, and they'll have the opportunity to transfer, which frankly is one of, one of the great things about how our system works. All of our employees, you know, they aspire to go to the bigger, newer stores, and it's, it's part of our, you know, the way they ascend through the ranks with managing bigger, more complicated stores and all sorts of pretty neat systems. Of those, there'll typically be nine to 10 employees on a sink, on a particular busy shift, and then, as I mentioned a little earlier, we'll always have at least three employees on the property at all times.
A quick question on that.
Sure.
Three employees that will be there, are they manning outside and inside?
It will be, there would be two in the store and one out by the pumps. So at slow times, the pumps can be handled by one person, and then the store has to be done to handle by two people to keep it on things. So again, I mentioned that they would be from, from this community to the greatest extent possible, and they'll go through our training program that we put all our employees through, which is something that I think we do a particularly good job. And I have a list here. We do a lot of things. We call Quick Check University, and we talk about TCB, which is Total Customer Dedication, and teaching our employees how to be focused on the customer, customer service, food safety, leadership training, of course, the fuel safety things I mentioned. And we even have a program where we'll teach the store leaders how to read the profit and loss statements for their, for their stores. So I always stress what a great opportunity is for minors and for young, young adults who are trying to balance school and work, and we're all very proud of that. In fact, I think in our support center, myself included, we've almost all had our own kids work at, at one of our stores at one time or another. So that concludes what I prepared for trying to hit all the typical questions we get, but I'm certainly happy to try to answer any other questions that might.
Good presentation. You answered a lot of the questions I was already jotting down. First question was, will Quick Check be closing Washington Avenue? You answered that. Will the employees be moving over? Basically answered that. You mentioned that you're not a 24/7 operation. I've been in many meetings and we've got many emails, but just to put on the record, your hours of operation are going to be?
We're going to close at 1:00 a.m. and we'll open at 3:00.
And when the store is closed, will there be employees inside the store stocking or leaving doors?
Well, that's a very good question. I don't know that the redevelopment ordinance gets into that detail. Typically, we would like to reserve the opportunity to have employees in the store. It's helpful for us for the same reason we like to be open all night, is to have people that are preparing, cleaning, repairing, baking stuff. So if it is okay, we would like to be able to keep people on, in the store at night. I'm sure Bob's going to make a comment about the staff. I'm not sure what they would do with the staff, but I would assume that we would reduce the lighting on the site to just whatever is required for security. We would turn the canopy lights off, we turn the, we turn our signs off, and if it would be okay, I would, I would like to reserve the right to have employees in the store at night.
You mentioned that the deliveries take, are in the back of the store, which would be closer to some of the residential properties, but you also said it was really a silent delivery. So do the trucks not have backup alarms?
No, well, what's nice is the way that we have that area behind the store designated as a loading zone, and I'm sure our engineer will can show you the truck turning. Typically, they're able to pull into that area without any kind of crazy maneuvers, and they're removed from the customer parking area, and we don't have any kind of mechanized equipment that unload the truck. And the way our plan is, has developed, and Matt will show you later, actually, our back is to, what is the, the one-way road? Stevens. I'm sorry, I mixed up all four roads. But our loading will be parallel to Stevens, which I believe is as far away from residential as we were able to.
Sir, come in.
Any other comment? Does the public have any questions at this time? Mr. Sheldon? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Sheldon, would you wait a second?
Sure.
I'm a lawyer.
I just want to ask, one, one of the things that we see in New Jersey a lot, and it may not be a Quick Check, but it is often that there are rental trucks or some other type of rental function and that share space with some service stations. And I want to make sure that that is not, we've never talked about that being a component here, and I just want to confirm that that's not going to be proposed or.
Absolutely not. The parking is too dear to us. We would, we would never want to do something like that. There's no other vehicle-related ancillary business or anything that we would ever consider.
Marian, can we make that a condition or?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's.
I actually, I actually brought that up to Marian because I see it on Route 21 a lot right off of Route 21, that there are vehicles, trucks that actually park in gas stations. So if that could be a condition, that would be great.
Sure, sure. And I would point out again, having said we don't have any franchises or anything, so everybody answers to the home office, and no one's able to run off and do something crazy like that on the road.
No, thank you.
That's an important point. I think one of the, one of the reports, I think inadvertently mentioned it was a franchise operation. And Quick Check has no franchises, so it's not like a rogue franchisee might do something.
And then having people on site, like you said, that's just extra eyes and ears and on-ground, so if they were reported, of course. Thank you.
Mr. Sheldon? Would you please say your name and address when they're on campus?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Flight Street. Good evening, everyone. Start off by saying that Mr. Lamont and Mr. Graziano answered one of my initial questions, and that was what was going to be the disposition of the Quick Check currently located on the corner of Little in Washington. I happen to live right around the corner from that, so obviously some concern. As was explained, the lease for that current Quick Check is about to conclude. I think the timeframe was mentioned of 30 years, so it will start in 1995, so obviously we're within about two years of the termination of that lease agreement. So my first new question here is, the new Quick Check, that's going to be another lease agreement, you're not purchasing the property, you'll be leasing that property from the property's owner?
That is correct, yes. It will be a lease.
And do you know the length of that? Is that going to be another 30-year lease or?
Yeah, it's a long-term lease. I don't recall the specific term, but typically it'll be at least 20 years. I don't recall the specific term, but typically it'll be at least twenty years for the first initial term.
At least twenty years, all right. The owner of the property, I don't know if there are any representatives here tonight for the actual property owner, but it's been since 2013 O and R Urban Renewal LLC. As many on the board are aware, the block was school number one for a hundred-plus years. At the end of December of 2011, it was sold by the Board of Ed to Town Hall for one dollar.
We know the history. Is this a question for the owner?
Yes. So in 2013, the Town Hall sold this same block, which is a 1.6 acres, to this LLC, O and R Urban Renewal, for one million dollars. The school was, school number one was subsequently razed. And there was some site remediation performed as Mayor Kimball and Councilmember Kennedy and the former town attorney, Tom Murphy, explained to us in the last several years. So there was a need for site remediation. Is this property now, no further action necessary? Or is there still going to be some site remediation necessary before any construction can take place, either with the Quick Check aspect and/or the residential part of the building? The other thing I wanted to ask is, you know, I probably will be told this is out of bounds and not germane, but the entity that owns the block, O and R Urban Renewal, their address, their legal address is 232 Division Avenue here in Belleville, which is just a typical modest, single-family home, fifty-six hundred square feet. But somehow this entity purchased the block in 2013, bought a whole block for one million dollars. Now, I know many of us here in Belleville, we all separately own blocks. I mean, I've never figured out how, what's going on here? How could a house, a typical nondescript Belleville home, be the owner of a block that they were able to pay one million dollars not that long ago? And now the conservative estimates are that this block is worth at least ten million dollars, just the land value.
Just to show them.
Out of bounds, right?
It's not a question yet.
Well, I was hoping that.
I'm sure he doesn't know how the owner of. I'm sure that this gentleman who works for Quick Check doesn't know how the property owner has the money to own this site and live in a six-hundred-foot square foot.
Please wait till the don't speak.
I understand you have a question about that, but there's nobody here, particularly the witness who you're supposed to be addressing questions to, who could possibly know the answer to that question.
All right, so it's my safe to assume that there is no representative here tonight from Bowler?
I don't know. There's been only one witness so far, and he works for Quick Check. If they bring a witness up from the other place and you want to ask that question or he testifies to that, something to do with that issue, you can bring it up. But I'm sure that Mr. Lamont does not know how that situation is working itself out. It's not his concern.
I understood that that would be the response, but I was hoping, so none of you know if there are any representatives here tonight for O and R Urban Renewal?
No, we're going to be surprised, just like you'd see, who the other people.
All right, well, maybe I'll finally get an answer to that question, how this property came to be owned by this single little home in Belleville. So that's it for the moment, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, we have no intent, we're here for the site plan for Quick Check. I have no witness from O and R. We have no, I don't know if anybody here is from O and R.
Right.
I did not meet with them, but we're just here for the site plan for Quick Check.
And if I may answer the first question regarding environmental. It's typical and fundamental to all of our deals that we do some due diligence at the beginning. I'm not going to be able to recite what our findings were, but our deals always address whose responsibility it will be to clean up and how the costs will be shared between us and our landlord. So we're absolutely aware of any environmental issues that may be there. And they will be taken care of as part of this project.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Your next witness?
Yes, thank you. The next witness will be our site engineer, Matthew Kunsman from Bowler Engineering.
Please raise your right hand. You swear a testimony shall give, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please give us your name and business address for the reference.
Sure. My name is Matthew Kunsman. My last name is spelled K-U-N-S-M-A-N. I'm currently employed at Bowler Engineering at Thirty Independence Boulevard in Moore, New Jersey.
And your credentials for the record, please.
Yes, so I have an education from Syracuse University, Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm currently employed at Bowler. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. And I've been accepted as an expert witness.
No, except for credentials.
And would you just.
Go ahead. He's been sworn in.
Yes.
I'm just loading up the screen. Sorry, I know you and I have had this little thing.
I know you swore in, but everyone was confused because I didn't hear my voice.
Now, if you could explain to the board, please, your relationship to this project.
Yes, so I help oversee the designs, plans. I've been to the site. I've been involved in the project for numerous years.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead then and go through your testimony? I'll prompt you if you're missing something, but go ahead. Try not to interrupt you.
Sure. I want to introduce my first exhibit. This is an aerial exhibit prepared by Bowler dated January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. How should I mark this exhibit? Should it be?
Is it already submitted? Has it been submitted as part of your?
No, I don't believe so.
Oh, okay, then let's mark it as A1.
I can put it in the top right corner and then I can forward this.
Corinne, are you going to want hard copies?
I could take hard copy or email.
Oh, that's easier.
All right, so this is the aerial exhibit prepared by Bowler dated January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. The site is outlined in yellow in the center of the page. The property is known as eighty-one Stevens Street, Block nine, four, zero, three, Lot one. The total lot is 1.61 acres. One thing you'll notice on this property is that it's in a redevelopment zone, the SRDP zone. However, it is split zone right in the middle part, towards the right portion of the property. So we are actually, as part of our application, subdividing this property into two lots from one lot. And that subdivision will occur where the zone line is. So just to describe the surrounding area, so starting with the streets. To the west of the site is Cortlandt Street. That travels in north-south direction two ways. And beyond that, there are residential and commercial uses. To the north of the site is Academy Street. That also travels, a lot travels in east-west direction two ways. And there are residential uses beyond that. To the east of the site is Stevens Street. That travels in a southbound direction one way. And beyond that are commercial and residential uses. And to the south of our site is Rucker Street, which is a county road, travels in an east-west direction two ways as well. And beyond that is commercial uses. Looking into the site, so the existing site, as previously described, it was previously a school with associated improvements. It was recently torn down, and now it's just the remains of the foundation in the center of the site. And then there's also the remaining asphalt that has been deteriorating. Along all the site fringes, there are sidewalks directly along the frontages on all four streets. And there's no storm management facilities on the site in current conditions. And the site's slopes from the north to the south, there's approximately a ten-foot grade change across the site. Next, I'm going to introduce my next exhibit. Mark this one A2.
This is the site layout plan, am I reading that correctly?
Correct. So this is the site layout plan exhibit prepared by Bowler dated January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. North is to the right side of the page, similar to the aerial exhibit I presented. So this is the site plan that was submitted to your office as part of our application. However, we had superimposed the landscaping and also colorized the exhibit. They have an aerial in the background. So as described before, we are subdividing this property into two lots. Lot one, that is where the Quick Check is positioned, is 1.23 acres. And Lot two is the northern portion of the lot, which will be part of a separate site plan application is 0.38 acres if any future development is supposed to go there. And both lots are compliant with the size and dimensions in accordance with the redevelopment plan. So we are proposing a Quick Check food store with fuel sales. It is, the Quick Check convenience store is 4,536 square feet. It's oriented with the front door facing Cortlandt Street. And we have the gas station with the canopy on the southern portion of the lot, which is oriented towards Rucker Street. There are twelve fueling positions, so that means there are six gas pumps and two diesel pumps as well, low-flow diesel. Additionally, we're proposing underground storage tanks to store the gas component for operations. That's located in the southwest portion of the lot. So there will be two twenty-thousand-gallon tanks and two ten-thousand-gallon tanks. And we are also proposing a vent stack adjacent to the underground storage tanks. With all these things, we are compliant with the Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks, which is regulated by the DPP. So moving along to how we access the site. So we have two full move-in driveways positioned on Cortlandt Street. One's located in between the drive aisle for the gas canopy. Oh, sure. So we have two driveways located along Cortlandt Street. Both are full move-in driveways. One's located in between the gas canopy and the convenience store. And one's also located in the northern side of the convenience store, that drive aisle as well. We also have a right-in, right-out driveway, so Egress and Egress driveway onto Rucker Street. And we have one more driveway located on Stevens Street, but it's a right-in driveway because it's a one-way road. All these driveways are an apron-style driveway, meaning that when there's a sidewalk crossing, it's raised. That way, it's a continuous skill for pedestrians walking down sidewalk. They're not going down ramps or anything like that. As part of our application, we are proposing to replace the sidewalks along the site frontages for this application. And over the years, this application, we've noticed that Rucker Street, those two intersections, have actually been improved by the county. So we will be working with the county as part of approval process to make sure that, you know, we're not ripping up recently constructed ADA ramps and things like that because all the certifications are required for that. pedestrians can access the site using these sidewalks that surround the whole project. There are two sidewalks, one off Stevens Street, which connects, say, in the middle of the fringe. And then there's a crosswalk that crosses the drive aisle and then goes to the striped area and sidewalk around the convenience store. We also have a sidewalk connecting to Cortlandt Street with a crosswalk and then some striping to access the convenience store as well. Additionally, we do have bike racks located along the front of the building. That way, pedestrians on a bike would be able to park their bike at the store. Surrounding the store are bollards rather than a curb to protect the building and provide some more convenient access for customers not having to step over curbs and, you know, potential hazard as well. So once you enter the site with a vehicle from one of the four driveways, we do have whole circulation around the gas canopy and the convenience store. So the site has been designed for WV50 trucks and also fueling truck and box trucks as well. So trucks can access the site either through the right-in driveway from Rucker Street and circulate the site or through Cortlandt Street and utilize those driveways, which is compliant with the redevelopment plan. So moving on to parking, we have a total of forty-four parking spaces proposed on site, or twenty-six are required for the code. Of those forty-four parking spaces, two of them are EV parking spaces, which are located adjacent to these underground storage tanks in the corner of the site. And then we also have two ADA parking spaces located in the front of the convenience store, which meets the ADA requirements. Additionally, we have one oversized parking stall located in the rear of the convenience store, just in case a landscape truck or something like that pulls onto the site, they might have somewhere to park their vehicle. And with all these parking spaces and these requirements, we are compliant with the landscape buffer requirements with a setback five feet where the parking spaces are. Additionally, we do have one loading space located in the rear of the convenience store, where one space is required. That loading space, zone has been designed to allow for WV50 trucks to be able to circulate in the rear of the store and also park in that loading zone as well. All right, moving on to signage. So we are proposing a nice sign package for the site. We have four wall-mounted signs for the convenience store. And we also have two Q logo signs, or of those four signs, two of them are Q logo signs, which I'll have an exhibit which shows it. And then also two are the Quick Check or letter signs. Of that, the Q logo signs are 22.6 square feet each, and the Quick Check sign is 57.7 square feet each. We also have a monument sign located on Rucker Street next to the Egress driveway. And that sign is 59.4 square feet in area, and it's a total of 10 feet tall and internally illuminated. We also have additional enter-and-exit signs for the other driveways, which are three square feet in area and are compliant with the code as well. That just allows vehicles that are traveling over these railways, it alerts them that there's a driveway to enter the site and exit as well. And lastly, we have three proposed candy signs located on the facade of the canopy, which are 22.6 square feet each. All these signs are compliant with the redevelopment plan. So we'll get here. Oh, sorry, yes. So we also have the existing Welcome to Belleville sign. It's located adjacent right there. And one of the comments was to provide easement to the township to maintain the sign. So we'll work through that process to provide the easement, require easement to maintain it.
There's going to be a condition. The, you don't own the property, but the easement's got to come from the property owner.
Right. Yeah, we'll work with.
That'd be a condition.
There are a couple of things, I think, in the redevelopment agreement that will require the. that will require the participation of the homeowner, but they're aware of that.
Okay.
One other thing I forgot to mention about the gas canopy is that it's 14 and a half, the clearance underneath is 14 and a half feet, which allows for trucks and other vehicles to be able to go underneath without hitting the gas canopy. All right, moving along to utilities. So we are proposing sanitary connections, water, gas, electric, to enable all those connections to be underground. And then moving along to stormwater. As described before, there are no existing stormwater facilities on the site. However, we are providing a very comprehensive stormwater design for this project. It complies with the major development criteria. One of the things that we are proposing is to, or proposing a trench drain around the underground storage tank concrete pad and also surrounding the gas canopy to catch any potential spills that will occur. And also, we have a green infrastructure, manicature treatment device to treat that stormwater as well. We also have filters or manicature treatment device filters to treat stormwater prior to entering an underground infiltration basin. And with that, we are reducing the amount of total runoff that's leaving the site. So the proposed, or the existing facilities in the road network will not be overburned by the proposed connection since we're reducing the amount of flow going to those inlets. Moving on to lighting, we are proposing full cutoff lighting, LED fixtures. It's fully compliant with the redevelopment plan. And we're also proposing three different, or three fences on the property. We have a six-foot-high solid wood fence along the property line on Academy Street. Or in between lot one and lot two, we would have a six-foot-high solid wood fence. And we also have a four-foot-high ornamental aluminum fence along Rutgers Street and Stevens Street as well. And lastly, we have a total landscape planting, or we have 603 total plantings of landscaping on site. We've worked with professionals extensively to provide a pretty robust landscape plan consisting of 68 trees. We're also maintaining two of the existing trees, which are substantial on Rutgers Street. And we're complying with the street tree spacer requirements and things of that nature. And we're also proposing irrigation on site to make sure that it can be maintained as well. Lastly, I just want to introduce a few more exhibits to paint a nice picture of our proposed application. So this will be exhibit 8.3, which is a perspective, it's a posed perspective from Rutgers and Cortland Street looking towards the site. So at that intersection, so the photo was taken and then our project was superimposed and added to this rendering. So what you can see here is the, there's two large trees, which are on Rutgers Street. And then beyond that, you have some shrubs and also some street trees. And then you can see the gas canopy in the distance. And beyond that, you can see the convenience store as well. And here's the welcome, the welcome sign.
8.3, I think you know about.
Can I have a question?
Yes, Mr. Brazian?
Yes, Mayor, I don't know if we spoke about it. On the outside, when we start looking at the crosswalks and things around that, I mean, is there anything we can do to brighten those four corners up from a crosswalk standpoint or the lining of it? I mean, I don't know if that's, if we can have that asked, if that makes sense? Because I know there's a lot of things. When things are done, right, when you see those, I look at, I know it's a render. But the highlights and stuff like that, just striping, if you will. Come on.
Yes, our traffic engineer will address that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So that we're going to mark as exhibit 8.3? And then you have one more you want to show us, Matt?
Yes, this will just be a similar exhibit. This will be 8.4, and this is looking from Rutgers, the corner of Rutgers and Stevens Street, looking towards the site. So you see the, from here, this is the right-in, right-out driveway on Rutgers Street. Has the monument sign nicely landscaped around that. And then the gas canopy is entered the site and can be stored beyond that.
Excuse me, is the sign lit?
Internally illuminated, yes. The panels are also internally illuminated, like where the Q sign is, so the light is low.
You need to mark that as well.
8.4.
8.4.
I'm actually just looking at, I don't know where that, where this conversation sits, but with traffic are here, but you see how that Y is between in and out? On the ground, the curb, I can't.
Is that a raised curb?
Is that a raised curb?
Which one's on the side? They'll be, they'll be flush.
Right, the reason why I ask is because it's all transparent, policing. I like, I would like to see something higher, so they can't make a left or a right. Something to where a car will not take that opportunity to go over. You know what I mean? Because if it's flat, people are going to go over to make a left, to make a right. How do we, how can we actually gear those, gear those pedestrians to do that?
That would actually be one of my questions too. I was wondering if it could actually be expanded somewhere. It could actually force them to make a right turn.
Or we put pillars in them to where they have to make that left and make that right.
Because it's happened a lot to us with the Starbucks, with the Wawa.
And they're going to do it anyway. And, you know, the people that are driving are going to do it anyway? I'm, I'm sorry. They're going to do it anyway, and we're not going to stop them? So how can we be proactive about it?
It's a very dangerous turn now, Rutgers.
On all, on all, on all Egress.
Can it be, can it be raised with the exception of the part that would extend from the sidewalk?
Yes, that, that's right. The, the portion where the sidewalk is will be flush for ADA compliance. But the portion of the island or forked shot that's beyond the sidewalk will be a malleable curb, which most cars won't want to go over because it's two-inch lip and a four-inch.
No, thank you.
That's the way it's designed now, or that's?
That's the way it's designed right now.
Okay.
So we don't have to make any changes to it?
Yes.
Why don't you say it was flat?
You said it was flat.
Sorry, I meant the black. There's two different curb heights.
Sidewalk is.
So the front portion where my mouse is, right here, where the sidewalk is, that will be flush. This portion back here is malleable.
Okay, okay. When you said flush, I thought it was flush all the way across.
Can you go back to the, that, the larger version of that exhibit?
This one or the other one?
No, 8.2, the one that's colorized in landscape.
This one?
Yeah, just the larger. So on the north side, you have an area that's colorized in green.
This one?
That looks like, and I might be wrong about this. Is that area on the other side of the subdivision line?
Correct, so the subdivision line, it's basically the edge of this mulch line, the shrubs. That's where the subdivision line occurs, and beyond that, it would be lot two.
So that lot, which is not the subject here, I don't want them to be dissuaded. That, that green line there, that looks like it could be part of this application to have green spaces, part of another application some other day.
You might have to stabilize that when you're done with all their grading and stuff anyways, so.
Right.
Conservation District can make them, make sure it's all, anything is stabilized, so.
Right.
For the stores to graze down there, get it stabilized.
I still want to find, I still want to find where that Y is, because when I get to that line. I'm sorry. I, I'm still just thinking through where, where you said it was flat, if you could bring that up. Because this, when we're, I'm experiencing getting calls where our convenience store is on Union and Dalville Avenue, right over.
711.
711? Can you bring that up, that little? Right, they, they actually make the left and right. There's nothing, and it's obvious, there's nothing stopping them from making the left and right. How can we avoid that now in this application? Just a question. Again, because we're making it and nothing's happening. It causes around kids, it's accidents, stuff happens.
Is that also raised though?
I, I gotta, I.
711.
It is raised.
It is raised?
Yeah, and, and what happens, you're still making it. They don't care because as soon as they come out, they know they can squeak. How can we prevent that, if, if at all?
Let's talk to the traffic guy.
I think, you know, we do have, I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with the 711. But there are other driveways that I think, over time, the people that visit the site, they're going to know that this is a tough turn to make, being a left. And they use the other driveways to get a more convenient turn for them.
Yeah, I'm just, just asking a question, like I said. Because I see what's happening, and if we could avoid it upfront, great. If we can't, we have to learn through it, I get it. We have to hold more people accountable. And that's a whole nother conversation, but I got you, just a question to ask.
Yeah, I understand.
We may be able to do bollards right into the street, so that we wouldn't, if you made that left.
Oh.
We wouldn't be able to get to the side of the.
We went to work with the county, I'm not sure what they would allow.
Across the street from Rutgers.
Across the street from Rutgers, could there be a little turn signal there? Sign put up there?
We, we do have no left turn signs at stop right here. I'm not, I'm not sure adding a sign covering my mouse is across, like pointing towards the driveway. We might be able to do something like that with the, verify with the traffic engineer or with the county as well, and see if we're permitted to have a sign there.
It's a county street, so once we go off our premises, it's really what they'll.
And, and through your chair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not asking you to, to resolve the problem, but how, how do we work to get there? Because it's inevitable, and you can see it, on Rutgers Street, they're going to come out and they're going to make a left. And if the traffic, you're going to come up. Willing on you? Okay, sorry. Okay, just tell me that.
Are you all done here?
Yes, I, I finished all mine directly on site.
No, oh my gosh.
So the renderings that you show are, are really nice. What's the likelihood that's what we actually get? So when developers often come into town, they show us nice glossy, full color. And it seems like a year and a half later, when we're cutting a ribbon, it's a different version. So I saw some nice landscaping, I saw some flowers, I saw that looked good.
Sure.
Tom Harris will tell you, I'm always crazy with this little ground cover that seems to collect nothing but garbage and litter all over some of our commercial properties. This looks really nice. It looks like it'll be maintained. Now, I did see something about, or hear something about landscaper or, but I mean, is that, are we, are you proposing flowers and grass or little litter-catching ground cover?
I think Rich, if I could call Rich, you know, because I said.
Well, I'd rather him just say that that's what we're getting, or is this just fiction?
No, 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 that, that is the proposal.
Okay.
And because it, these are all company stores. Typically, when it's a franchise operation, it's a battle between the corporation and the franchisee, who's not maintaining the property. But because, as Mr. Lamont testified, these are all company stores, all company employees, that, they have a, you know, a, a certain standard they have to maintain. And if it's not maintained, it's a reflection of the corporation, not the franchisee. So that's why I think you have some level of confidence that what you see is what you're going to get in this particular location.
I'm not done yet, but, I'm moving on flowers though.
Okay, I, I'm also, I have a question on the rendering as well. Mine is the opposite. Based on the engineering drawings and the driveway design and the sidewalk and the sidewalk ramping, there should be sidewalk that extends across here, and I don't see that. So, so this rendering doesn't exactly reflect.
I'm seeing sidewalk.
No, it's just.
Concrete is from.
It's just, yeah, it, it should be the sidewalk with an apron so that, so that the road doesn't look like it's, every driveway doesn't look like a new road.
That's the flat part, it was done with me.
This is a little bit of artist's kind of rendering, or I guess it depends on who did the, who did the rendering.
Well, my question is about flowers and grass. We're getting flowers and grass?
Well, yes.
It's a wall, it's in the drawing.
I would just say, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we give the renderer our landscape plan when we ask them to do this. So it is supposed to be representative of the massing of the plants that we're doing.
That's right.
I don't know that they'd all be bloomed at the same time. That might be a little bit of our.
That'll give you the idea.
That's right.
Through the chair, I gotta be honest with you, I'm surprised you're not asking for cherry blossoms.
We do have.
I see some, not bloomed yet.
What about back in June?
So stormwater, I did, I did hear you mention stormwater. You very cleverly said multiple times that there's currently none on site. But the site has a lot of grass right now. So I understand there's none on site now, but the site as is, I mean, there is a parking lot that's old and probably weeds going through, and there's probably a concrete foundation from an old basement. But there's a lot of grass now, and a lot of ways for water to seep through that grass. So I agree with you that there is none on site. But I do want to add, I'm not sure if everybody caught that. This is considered a major development, which means that you are going to be holding water on premises and slowly releasing it.
That, that's correct.
So it's not just, we're not just having an actual parking lot and it's going to runoff. We are holding it on site, collecting it, holding it, and slowly dispersing it.
Yes, there is a large underground infiltration basin, which has.
And that's by law, because you're a major developer.
Why don't you just explain what, how much you have to reduce, each storm, like a hundred-year?
Sure, so.
No, I understand, I was just making sure the public.
A two-year storm, you have to reduce by 50%, so the amount of runoff is leaving 50% less. For a 10-year storm, it's a 25% reduction, and then for a 100-year storm, it's 20%.
10-year storms have become the two-year storms. And 100-year storms have become 10-year storms, but, I got it.
Are there any other questions?
I just have one quick one. Seems popular to go down heavy electric car.
Yes. Yes, we have, we have two.
Yeah, two spots.
Two spots located in the southwest corner of the parking lot. That complies with the state.
Are they professional or for this?
Actually, everybody's going to have a role.
Everyone's playing about that stuff.
I know, just making a joke.
Our planner, please?
I mean, EV ready is the, was the state requirement. That doesn't mean they have the connection. I mean, they're willing to have the hardware to actually charge the car. Because we're getting all these new gas stations and we're not getting new charging stations. So in this particular application, especially this one, it should have both.
Yes, we, it is EV-ready, but it does take, like, we've had experience with other Quick Check stores putting EV in, it takes years to get that service and all that stuff. It just takes a long time. And it depends on who the, the company that supplies the EV. It's not really able to Quick Check.
Well, I think the, the way the rec is, is a timeframe where it can be implemented. In this, I mean, would, would you be able to accelerate that, or what is your expectation?
We've had problems with this, and I don't want to get trapped up.
So we understand that this is the new, you know, the new thing now. We're being asked to provide these in every location, and we're okay with that. We're showing them on our plan. The thing that we would just ask is that it's been very difficult to have these things implemented quickly. And we have stores that have been, already have been open for some time now that they're still fighting with utility companies, they're not able to get the equipment and things like that. So we're willing to commit to doing those two spots. We just can't have it be a condition to open the store because it's just impossible to. I mean, the one right near our office in Reddington, we're only just now getting the telephone pole put in, and the store's been open, I think, for a year now. So we're committed to doing it, it's just the timing is very difficult for us.
Oh, and perhaps Mr. Meyer, yellow, with something, if you put a condition that that's addressed in the redevelopment agreement, that we're allowed to with the town.
Yeah, that, that can. I'll propose some language for it, but I'm.
We'll work it out with Mr. Donald's, yeah? I think that's fine. We'll certainly do everything we can, but a lot of it is beyond our control. We'll certainly do everything we can, but a lot of it is beyond our control.
I mean, I think you could put something in there that says that the Quick Check will use its best efforts to have it installed as quickly as possible. And one of the, I'm not saying this is a concern or a reflection on Quick Check in any way, but it is a gas station. Their main business is act opposite of the electric charging stations. So you might see that there might be some reluctance to quickly putting them in. But I think if we just say that they'll make their best efforts to comply and to have it up and running. And then if down the road there's a problem, we'll be able to look to this to say, hey, there's, you guys have committed to this.
I think that's fair.
Any other questions? Open up to the public, Mr. Frantantoni. Please come up and state your name and address for our records.
Frantantoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue, Belleville. First of all, I'd like to welcome Quick Check to Belleville, finally something that I can approve of. Forty years I've been traveling to the Poconos almost every weekend. You have fifteen north into two or six, you guys over here, there's three Quick Checks going up there. And we frequent them quite often. They're well-maintained, their service is great, their products are great and all. As far as the landscaping, they maintain the three that I'm aware of, are well-maintained. So, we're happy to see that. What I don't like is the subdivision for more human cages on the north side of this property, all right? In regards to the left turn, you're absolutely right, the seven eleven is a disaster. There was just another accident there about three weeks ago, somebody making a left turn. Almost every born might have down to open my business, there's people coming out making a left turn. They pull out, they block the westbound traffic, and they can't get in to make a left turn. And so people sit there for two or three lights, all this guy trying to make a left. When that was first approved, there was no exit or entrance on Belleville Avenue. A month later, the lawyer come back, said, oh, we need an entrance. So what they did, we objected to left turns, so they're gonna solve the situation by putting a malleable curb, which is no curb at all. But there's a very simple solution. We did it in the late eighties. The Kmart, and gentlemen, when you leave tonight, you can go a few blocks and see what we're talking about. We had a problem with Kmart shoppers going out Main Street and making a left turn, blocking everything like crazy. I was director of engineering, we came up with the idea, but now look at it. They had a building in Ireland with a six-inch curb, a sharp turn, it's impossible to make a left turn at a Kmart down there. This should be done here, and you have plenty of left, because you have a lot of lovely landscaping on Rutgers Street. So I'm sure you could spare another eight feet going west, so you make that entrance a little wider. So you put this curbing in, if you could look at it, okay, but it's not something theoretical, it's something we actually have here. That's a definite solution, because nobody's gonna drive over a six-inch curb with shrubbery and whatever in there. So, that'll solve that problem. Also with the landscaping, like I said, it's, every one of the Quick Checks I've seen, they're well-maintained. But perhaps you could mandate that they use the landscaper who does the library. I mean, that's well-maintained. Our library always has flowers in the season, they're changed, the shrubberies are maintained and all, and that's it. Other than that, I like this project, maybe to the surprise of some of you, but this is more what we need. We don't need housing. So, once again, thank you Quick Check. If you take those recommendations, like I said, I'll take, and you wanna see after meeting that current damage. That's a definite solution to that problem. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. Sheldon? Questions?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. I will do my best to ask questions only at this point. All right. Sidewalks. Will Quick Check be putting in brand-new sidewalks around the complete perimeter of their lot, the three sides? Or will they be doing patchwork, repair, repair work? I know that that sidewalk there is...
It was testified, he said he had to replace his sidewalks.
The entirety, all of the existing sidewalk bordering their property is gonna be torn up? They're gonna be putting in brand... Just wanna get it on record, because I...
They testified to that, it's on the record.
Thank you.
Just to be clear though, we may, we may maintain two of the corners where they would just constructed, the county just constructed in a couple years. But everything else is being replaced along the site front is...
That's all I wanted to know.
Just the three sides.
As Mr. Melon mentioned a little while ago, this, because of the size of the property involved there, this is considered a major site renovation. They're also doing gas sales. I understood, right, remember correctly, the state of New Jersey now requires gas stations to have emergency generators. That has been in place shortly after Sandy collaborated us, the state put in laws so that all gas stations have to have emergency generators. So, my question, next question is, will your gas station have an emergency generator? And if so, where is it going to be located? And if you are putting in any emergency generators for the gas operation, will there be any emergency generators for the Quick Check per se?
There is a transfer switch for the building. There is a transfer switch for the building which allows for a portable generator to be delivered to the site. Quick Check's found the success of having a contractor deliver a generator, rather than having their own and having to maintain it. That way they're getting state-of-the-art generator and things of that nature.
All right, all right. Not a perfect solution, but it's still, right, you're thinking forward, and you have the contingency in place that if you do need an emergency generator, you have the ability to do that transfer switch hookup. So thank, thank you for that. The gas section has a very large canopy, and also your store is fairly large. If I remember correctly, to, under state law, major site projects like this have to at least make the provision for solar. So my next question is, do you have any plans at this moment to have solar panels either on the gas canopy or on the store itself?
I'll let the architects answer that.
All right, well, I'll save that question if I have to bring that up again later on. When I read through the narrative for your project, it said that there were no indoors, there was no indoor seating for the Quick Check, but there were eight seats outdoors. I don't remember you indicating where on the site plan the outdoor seating is going to be located.
So we have, I actually did not bring this up, so thank you. We do have two tables providing eight seats on the corner of the building. From certain amounts.
Those little gray, that little gray circle there, okay. All right, all right, thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Navarado, I did mention about the Welcome to Belleville sign, which is going to stay on Rutgers Street, but I think you're gonna move it somewhat west of where it's...
We're maintaining that sign.
Right, I'm glad you are doing that. Simple question here, will that sign have any illumination at nighttime? Is it possible, I don't think there's any light in there right now. Could a, could a small LED light be included so that when it's after sunset, that the, that Welcome to Belleville sign has some visibility, rather than being hidden amongst all of the trees and shrubbery?
I mean, yes, we could propose that, I'm not sure, I hope.
Well, I was just, I was very happy to hear Mr. Lamont say how Quick Check really wants to bond with the community. And this would be a nice gesture on your part to help us illuminate when I go Welcome to Belleville sign. This is the main entrance point to Belleville. Having that sign illuminated a little bit after, after dark, I think would be a very positive thing to do for all, everyone's interest.
Yeah, I would...
So, what I would say to that is, I think that we had discussed early in the project that, that our understanding would be Quick Check would maintain the property around that and the landscaping around the sign. And that Belleville would have an easement, that they would be free to do whatever they want with the sign. We didn't wanna take on responsibility of having a Belleville sign that we had to maintain. But having said that, we'll certainly work with the town and whatever is necessary if they decided they had lighting and needed source of electricity.
Thank you for that. Maybe you can make us some sort of condition that, at least some of the electrical provision be set up so that down the road, if you want to have illumination of that sign, it would be possible without having to do a lot of original work and disturb the existing sidewalks and shrubbery, et cetera. The last thing I wanted to add to, there's been a lot of discussion, rightly so, about the turn situation onto Rutgers Street. If I could, you could just slide, slide the... The first question, I have my little laser pointer, but I don't think it's gonna work so well. There, right before the exit or entrances, there's a black line. Like, maybe if I just go over here, it'll be easier, because my laser pointers aren't working. Is this just, is this just a drain? Right here, that's just a drain, just a drain. Because originally I was hoping that maybe it was some sort of gate or barrier that might eventually curtail all the illegal turns that will inevitably take place at this intersection. But as Mr. Frantantoni described, the solution to the similar problems that you said at Kmart, and if you could bring up, I think, you have one ground-level point of view rendering showing from the corner of Stevens. Yeah, thank you. I, just to add to what Mr. Frantantoni was describing, let me go back to the... If you could take away some of this area, move this back, and make a physical barrier that would force the issue so that motorists leaving would have no potential of making that illegal left turn onto Rutgers Street. If you were to extend the curb and move, just cut away a little bit of that landscaping, you could force people to have their cars positioned so far west that it would be virtually impossible for them to make the illegal left turn. And I think that's what, Mr. Frantantoni, there, I can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but that's what I think he was suggesting. You know, putting in the proper physical barriers so that people would, coming out of that exit would have to move west. They could not possibly push their cars around at that stage. So just something else for everyone to consider, I think that would be a viable solution and would mitigate all of the... If this, if that current plan stands, you're going to have a tremendous number of accidents and traffic tie-ups, additional traffic tie-ups at that intersection. So something has to be done.
Earlier, we came up with a...
Right. So, I know there was various ideas about bollards and what have you, but I think Mr. Frantantoni's solution is the one that makes the most sense and would settle this issue once and for all.
Through the chair, that's what I brought up. And then Mr. Frantantoni and yourself jumped on that. So yes, we're definitely looking at that, Mr. Sheldon. So it did come from this table that we recognize that happened in the past. So just, we're with you, you're with us, so we just brought that up.
I'm glad we're all together on this issue and that we know what the dangers are here. If things aren't beat a little bit tonight, so thank you. I think that is it, we just can't... Oh, I, they have one last question right here. The trees that are going around the property, do you have any idea what the maximum height of these trees will be upon maturation? There was some discussion of possibly cherish, the reason you smiled, Mr. Melon, but, you know, the visibility to this facility could be largely obstructed if these trees should turn out to be thirty or forty feet tall.
There's already thirty, forty-foot trees on the site that are staying, it's already been testified to.
I think the, what the, the one or two trees that we're preserving is like right along Rutgers Street... Let me finish. Right along Rutgers Street by the northwest, southwest corner, I think all of the other old growth trees on this property unfortunately are gonna be lost. There would be, I think you're keeping the two trees right along the Rutgers Street. But I'm, that, if you just go back to the previous slide for a second, the Rutgers Street, that intersection is likely to be the main entrance and exit for this facility. And if you, if you have all of these new plantings on Stevens Street, if those should turn out to be thirty, forty feet or higher, a lot of the visibility of that entrance and exit, it could be compromised. So that's why I'm asking, any idea what type of trees are gonna be planted?
I don't think Quick Check is gonna compromise people seeing their store.
Yeah, we do have a monument sign. If someone was, you know, going down this road and it's raining driveway only, they do have a monument sign that will alert the driver. And they did miss the driveway, they can make a right on the next street and enter the site through those two driveways as well, if they were unfamiliar.
That's understood, but usually in plans like this, there's usually a separate page where a specific list is given of the particular types of plantings.
It's a zoechol. It's a zoechol.
I'm not familiar with that, that species, what is it?
What we've planted, what we do road jobs.
And what are the typical heights?
I'll go look it up right now.
All right.
All right, are there any other questions while we're looking up the tree height?
I'll return to my seat while Mr. Harris is doing a bit of research. You do, I assume there's another, more experts to testify. Hopefully one of those experts knows exactly what type of plantings are being contemplated for this... It does, I will readily admit that the site in these renderings, you know, looks beautiful. And I, this comes to fruition, wonderful for all of us. But there are some concerns, you know, I'm, as you're the planning board, you have to not only look at what's happening now, but how projects like this evolve and will affect the rest of the way down the road. So that's why I'm trying to envision what becomes of these plantings twenty, thirty, forty years from now.
By the time you get done, the plantings are gonna be thirty or forty feet high. I mean, you gotta ask a question.
I've been asking all questions, I asked, what's the height of the trees?
I know, you asked the height of the trees, and then he spoke for fifteen minutes. He can't tell you the height of the trees, he's not an arborist.
All right, well, that's why I asked if someone, that there's another expert here that...
Okay, I don't know, let's... Let's size, just like everybody else.
We will, we will get back to you. If there's no other further questions...
Mr. Harris has a number, I didn't hear where the dent of the noise...
Well, that makes it even more difficult for our court reporters. So everyone's kinda speaking, and please wait for your turn.
I will return to my seat. Mr. Harris, could you please, just for the record, tell us what you found for the height?
Japanese zoechol grows to fifty to eighty feet.
Fifty to eighty feet?
Well, I will say is they're planted, the planting height of them, you know, can range, of course, by ten to fifteen feet and they grow approximately a foot a year. But then, you know, the eighty feet, that's if you're in the middle of, you know, a field or something like that. This is, you know, it's in an urban area, so there's not as much area for...
These are fairly large trees, so... That's all I wanted to know, thank you, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public? Yes, Mr. Harriet.
I'm gonna send him forward a copy of our streetscape plan, so you know how we want the sidewalk, there's pavers that go between the curb and sidewalk.
Okay, I think it's part of our report, so, okay, we'll work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for your next witness.
Okay, let's call our project architect.
Would you please raise your right hand? You swear to testimony, you should be able to tell me the truth, the culture is telling you about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please give us your name and business address for the record.
Sure, my name is Oliver Yung, Y-O-U-N-G. I'm a principal at GK MK Architects. Our address is 36 Eames Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. Just to present my qualifications quickly. Good evening, I hold a bachelor's degree in architecture from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute located in Toronto, New York. I've practiced in the field of architecture for over twenty-four years. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2006. My license is current, and although I have not appeared for this board before, I've appeared at over fifty-five planning and zoning boards throughout the state and have accepted all.
Right, we accept your credentials.
Very much.
Could you please explain the role that your relationships with this particular project has been?
Yes, since 2018, I believe, when the project started, we've worked with Quick Check on the design of the building elevations, colors, and materials.
Okay, and they're trying to get to...
Can I just, for the record, this zoechol is a Musa shido, and it goes to forty-five feet and it only has a fifteen-foot wide spread. It's four column, so they plant them far enough apart to be able to see.
Mr. Sheldon, did you hear what Mr. Harris...
Mr. Sheldon, did you hear what Mr. Haritz had?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. While Mr. Kunsman pulls up the building elevations, I'm going to speak to the floor plan very quickly. As the two previous witnesses have mentioned, the building footprint is 4,536 square feet. The building is 79 feet wide, 57 feet, 6 inches deep. For orientation purposes, we consider the front of the building faces west along Cortland Street. Now, the floor plan itself, which was submitted to the board as part of your drawing package, it's typical for a Quick Check store, and in fact, a lot of convenience store layouts, where the customer area is the core of the store and the perimeter of the store is taken up by the service equipment, bathrooms, office, walk-in, cooler, prep area, et cetera, et cetera. And I will mention that there is no interior seating at this location. And I believe we have to mark this exhibit as A5.
A5, yeah.
Yes, and these are color-rendered building and fuel canopy elevations prepared by our firm dated April 5, 2023. I'm going to first discuss the massing of the elevations. The main overall height of the building is 23 feet, 6 inches above the finished floor. At the center of the front elevation, which is the top of the page, that's the elevation facing Cortland Street. The middle of the building bumps up a little higher, up to 27 feet, 6 inches. And then at the corner of that front elevation, the west side, you see a green tower element, and that tops off at 32 feet. For reference, that tower element is 11 feet, 7 inches wide along that elevation. And then moving down to the second elevation on the left, that's the elevation facing Rucker Street. The green tower wraps around the Rucker Street elevation for another 11 feet, 7 inches. And I do want to mention in regards to the massing and heights, all these heights are to the top of the parapet, not to the actual roof. And that's a very important point I want to make. We have a significant amount of rooftop equipment here. We have two to three HVAC units, a walk-in condenser, two or three exhaust fans, makeup air unit, plumbing crews. This parapet is designed to be high enough to screen all of that equipment from public view. Including the massing, we're going to discuss the materials and colors. The two prevalent materials across all four building elevations here are a red brick and a light gray brick. The red brick acts as the base of the building. Goes up to a height of about 11 feet, 6 inches, where it's topped with a brown stone coping. Above that, we have a light gray brick finish, which continues to the top of the building, which is capped with a 10-inch-high light gray metal coping. Light gray matching the color of the brick. Along the front elevation of Cortland Street, you see a couple different building elements. The brick there tops off at 3 feet, 6 inches. We have storefront glazing sitting on top of this continuing to a height of 11 feet, 4 inches. The glazing framing itself is a dark bronze material. At 11 feet, 4, you see a small, light green canopy, but it's a flat canopy. It projects out over that glazed area in the storefront entrance doors, which you see on the right, it projects out 3 feet. Once it goes beyond the entrance doors on the right-hand side, it actually steps back in towards the building and only projects out 1 foot 4. That light gray, sorry, light green element continues over to the green tower on the right, and it wraps around the Rucker Street elevation and terminates where the green tower terminates. Above that light green canopy, we see additional glazing. That goes up to a height of 16 feet. That glazing itself is not transparent. It's called spandrel glazing, so you cannot see through it. It's a light gray color. And you'll see in the rendered elevation, it looks a little bit different than the glazing below it, which is transparent and will have a view into the store. From 16 feet to 27 foot 6 at the center of the front elevation where the Quick Check signage is, that's not a light gray brick, that's actually a white stone veneer system, and that's capped with a white metal coping colored to match the white stone. I do want to point out, I mentioned the glazing being transparent below that light green canopy. However, at the tower element on the right-hand side, the glazing there that you see, even the lower portion, that is spandrel also. Just those two panels on the right, and then the two panels as you wrap the corner to Rucker Street. That goes back to my floor plan testimony where I said the perimeter of the store is all the backup house, service area, bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. You can't have glazing looking into that part of the building. So that's the necessity for the spandrel glazing in that portion. I'm going to pivot over to the Rucker Street elevation, which is the elevation just below the Cortland Street elevation on the left. We consider that the second primary elevation as it faces one of the busier streets here. And just to provide some visual interest there, we've added some spandrel glazing elements in the center of the facade. We've added a light green canopy there also, which projects out 3 feet. And then where we have the signage, we've added that white stone veneer that we talked about on the front elevation, and we bumped that portion of the parapet up too. So those dimensions, those proportions match what we see on the front elevation. For the other two elevations, the Stevens and Academy Street, we, we have the two prevalent materials of the red brick and the light green brick, and not much else there. We have utilities in the back of the building, and we consider those, although they face streets, to be less prominent and more muted. We're calling them the two quiet sides of the building. Matt, if you could just zoom out a little, please? At the bottom of this page, we have the fuel canopy elevations. I believe in his testimony, Matt, mentioned the minimum dimension from gray to the underside of the fuel canopy is 14 foot, 6 inches to allow fueling trucks to move smoothly underneath. The height of the canopy itself is 3 feet. There's an 8-inch light green band, and then above that, there's a 2-foot, 2-foot 4-inch dark green band. Those two greens match the two greens on the building. The columns supporting the fuel canopy are 2 foot by 2 foot, and there a red brick that's going to be the same exact brick that we're using on the building. So there's a nice synergy between the building and the fuel canopy in terms of colors and materials. It's the same exact material. I know Matt briefly talked about signage quantities and sizes. We can see them here on these elevations. This is the newer Quick Check design, which we started working with Quick Check back in 2018. And we purposely, purposely split the Quick Check and the Q. Older Quick Check buildings have the Quick Check and the Q together. When we designed this building, we realized we're in a different age. We're in the age of social media abbreviations and hashtags. So we see the Q as the defining element for a Quick Check. So we split that apart from the Quick Check lettering itself and placed that on the tower to purposely accommodate the Q. So we have the Quick Check and the Q on the Cortland Street elevation, and the Quick Check on the Q on the Rucker Street elevation. The Quick Check, just to repeat what Mr. Kunsman testified to, is 57.7 square feet. The Q on both the sides is 22.6 square feet. And on the fuel canopy, where we show two of the four typical elevations, we have three Quick Check signs there, 22.6 square feet. All the, all the signs, sizes are in compliance, there's no variances required. That does conclude what I wanted to address in my direct, but I will bring up the question about solar here. In regards to the building itself, it's not practical to put solar panels on the roof of the building. It might seem like a big footprint for the building, but if you consider the amount of rooftop equipment that I testified to, the height of the parapet to screen all this equipment, and the fact that the parapet itself, due to its height to screen the equipment, is going to have significant bracing elements here, there's not a lot of space to provide solar panels. It would be quite hectic, and I don't think you would get enough sunlight consistently on all those to provide a good energy drop. And quite frankly, I know the fuel canopy's out there, assuming that's a big footprint, but based on our experience with Quick Check, if solar made sense as a business model in terms of energy savings, they would have done it by now. It simply doesn't make sense for them. I know 10, 15 years ago, when LED lights first started to become popular, the second it made sense, I know Quick Check went back and changed all of their stores out to LED lights. So if solar panels made sense here in terms of energy savings, we would have done it at this point. And I do not believe there are any state regulations that require us to provide solar panels on the building of fuel canopy. If there are, obviously, we would have to comply with any codes or regulations requiring them.
Thank you, that's all we have for this witness.
Any questions?
So the Q green tower, I know you have a long-term lease. At the end of your lease, will the trees obstruct that in any way, shape, or form? That's kind of a joke. Good question. So I saw a stone brick, there's no stuff on this building, right?
There is zero stuff on it.
No hardy board?
Zero.
And those are legit, are those thin brick, real brick?
The lower portion of it is a 4-inch brick, which is a traditional brick veneer. For the upper portion where it's gray, we're actually proposing to go thin brick there just because we want to step the building in right there. It's purely aesthetic.
I was in Totowa this weekend, I saw, is that the exact, I saw, it looked very similar to this one?
The, it looks very similar, the brick, the stone veneer at the Quick Check is similar. However, Totowa does have the stuck-up on the upper portion where you see the gray here. In Belleville, we're proposing the gray brick, which Totowa does not have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have friends, nice friends.
Wait, when your lease is over, do you take the trees with you?
Are you sure?
Start alone.
Are there any other questions from the board members? No? Anyone from the public have any questions for our architects testifying in here? No, okay.
Thank you. We'll go to traffic.
Thank you.
Just want to zoom in, so it just kind of...
So that's, I believe, A2?
Yes.
For the record, we have A2 on the screen. Your name, an address for the record, please.
Oh, let me swear a minute for...
Yep.
Do you swear a testimony you shall give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please give us your name and business address for the record.
It's John Corak, last name spelled C-O-R-A-K, with Stonefield Engineering and Design at 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
And you are testifying as an expert in?
Traffic engineer.
And your qualifications as an expert?
Of course, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, hold a bachelor of science in civil engineering from the College of New Jersey, an expert in the field of traffic and transportation engineering. I've prepared over 100 traffic studies for land development applications. I've testified in front of over 75 boards in the state of New Jersey, and I do serve as a board reviewer for multiple municipalities in the state.
Well, let's accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Corak, would you explain your relationship to this particular project has been, please?
And so, me and my office, we were retained to conduct a traffic impact study.
Bless you, thank you.
Retained to conduct a traffic impact study for the proposed development. We worked with Quick Check on a number of applications. In this case, and with all traffic studies, we begin with field investigation. We review the surrounding roadway network. Of course, this lot, prior to subdivision, is a full-block lot, has frontage on four streets. After the subdivision, we lose that frontage to Academy. And so, in the scheme of the roadway network, we can typically look at the four corners around the full-block lot. But in this case, that's a very unique situation here where part of the fronting streets, specifically Stevens Street, works as a larger quasi-jug-handle network for that intersection of Main and Rutgers. Right, where that ties in with Route 24. Essentially, if you come off of Route 21 South, like I did coming here today from our office in Rutherford, you get off at Exit 7, you make that left on the Main Street, and you're headed down toward the site. If you wanted to go across the bridge, cross Passaic River, or just get back on 21, you actually need to make a right turn onto Academy, it's a little one-way stretch, and then make a left turn on Stevens Street, another one-way stretch of those two roads in order to complete, you know, a jug-handle maneuver that's done with your normal Belleville streets. So it creates a really interesting and unique traffic condition here. We see a high volume of left turns from Stevens onto Rutgers. And then when that backs up, as it frequently does, even this afternoon, saw it back to Academy, which that happens regularly in our site visits. You'll have people using the traffic signal at Cortland Street. So a pretty unique traffic situation here. It's something that we want to make sure that we're monitoring carefully. Now, with a Quick Check development, unlike many other developments that you might see more traditionally on a highway, these projects tend to capture traffic from the surrounding roadway network. So in this case, especially during those peak periods, and with the traffic volumes that are in this area, you're not going to have a, you know, mass surplus of traffic arriving at the site simply because it's convenience use, right? You want to be able to get there quickly, get what you need, and leave. And so what you're going to see is you're going to see capture from the surrounding roadway network, and not so much from a larger draw or larger market area. It's very much a convenience-driven project. That in and of itself informs our development plan. Stevens Street, we understand the limitations and the traffic queuing that occurs there. So as such, we've only proposed a right turn in from Stevens Street. So you can't leave the site and go out to Stevens and then make that left turn. We really wanted to make sure that that traffic was serviced by the Cortland Street driveways. We've oriented the site and the store to face those driveways. So that way, when you come out on Cortland, you're able to utilize that traffic signal to make that left turn. Or you have that dedicated green time, you wait for incoming traffic to clear, and then you can make that left turn movement. As opposed to Stevens Street frontage or Stevens Street left turn, where you're looking both directions, you're trying to make sure that you have that appropriate gap, and it's overall a very difficult movement to make. Similarly, on Rucker Street, we propose that right-in, right-out driveway. That's done, of course, to limit left turns to and from the street. And we've heard a lot of the commentary about how to best channelize that driveway, how to enforce those left turn prohibitions. Obviously, we built in the channelization, we have the signage. And the examples thrown around today, there's a number of nuances to them, right? It ultimately comes down to how well you can angle that driveway. And that's something that we will work hand-in-hand with the county on. Think of that 7-Eleven, there's zero angling there. There's a raised island in the middle that doesn't actually channelize any cars left or right. It really serves as a boulevard device or not as any sort of left turn prohibition. The Lala site doesn't actually have any channelization at all. It has signs that prohibit the movements, and you're, you know, if you're during peak periods, there's going to be traffic there, and that's a deterrent. But non-peak, it's very easy to make those left turns. The Kmart site that we heard commentary on has a nice, large channel, I thought it was larger than really any design standard that I've seen out there today. But the key here is that it does angle the traffic toward that right turn movement. And that's something that we'll work with the county on to make sure we can come up with a safe design here, considering the sidewalk that crosses the driveway, considering the pedestrian infrastructure, and considering just how do we make sure that vehicles move slowly into the site and we're not creating a highway-off-ramp-style entrance to the site. So knowing that Rucker Street driveway is under county jurisdiction, we'll make sure that as we seek that county approval, we'll work with them to make sure that we're channelizing this to the greatest extent possible.
Mr. Corak, I just want to, I think, given the concerns everybody's had, it might be a good idea to make that a condition of approval, that they have to work with the county.
Use the mic, please.
Yes.
Never hear you.
What I was saying was, I think it might make sense, given the concern everyone has with that, that we may get a condition, that you would work with the county to make that, that intersection...
As channelized.
As channelized as you can to deter left turns onto Rutgers.
Yes.
Since it is under the county road, county road seemed to be that that would make the most sense. And then this way, you can work with the county to design that such that that exit's going to prevent as much as you can, whatever incentive people have to try and make a left.
That's fine, we have no problem with that as a condition of approval.
And through the chair?
Yes.
Interaction, interactive?
Yes.
As we look over here, Stevens Street, I love what you just said, so thank you over here. But over here, knowing Belleville, being there 60 years and knowing how it all works, even though this is a right angle, a right turn coming in, everybody here is going to come out this way, knowing that they can only go right. Is there anything that we can do to help prevent them coming out that way? And I know it's policing on our side, don't get me wrong. Is there anything that we can do to deter them from coming out that way? Because, you know, I can't go out right, I got to come down this way to Rucker Street because I got a little carny, I got to go to Burton County, wherever it is. And then this is a one-way coming out this way. Anything we can do? I mean, I love the fact that it's a right turn coming in, but again, you're with people, and people, and they're going to do what they got to do to get out. And if we're in this position, what can we do with anything?
Yeah, so in that area of the site, you know, it does have a one-way circulation. There are the Do Not Enter signs there. It is to, to some extent, channelized through there, just the, the way that the driveway is designed and the fact that it's an apron driveway. You know, it's shifted, so to speak, to reinforce that right-in movement. I think that as designed, it works very well to prohibit that kind of traffic, you know, that specific movement. And if there's something that your engineer, traffic engineer, would like to see further, we'd be happy to comply.
That'll be, okay, Tom. Thank you.
Great, so as I was mentioning earlier and talking about how the traffic networks sort of inform the access plan, the last street frontage I wanted to cover here was the Cortland Street frontage, where we do have the... the Portland Street frontage, where we do have those two full movement driveways, you'll see that the driveways are at a 90-degree angle, that is to allow those left-turn movements both in and out of those driveways, and something that, you know, is in, of course, you know, good access management design principles. Moving into the traffic impact part of our study, right, the actual meat and potatoes of the study, we did conduct turning movement counts at each of the four corners of this block, we came to understand, you know, through actual data, how these intersections are performing, we do see those substantial delays on Stevens Street, we see the Portland Street, as you line up half that approach headed, let's say, southbound toward the traffic signal, you generally are able to clear each signal, although you may be one of the last cars if you're coming to the approach to hit that yellow light, either make it or not make it, that's difficult for this area, especially during the peaks. But ultimately, the cars do flow through the area, with the exception of those left turns on Stevens, right, that is where you're going to see your delays if people try to complete the jug handle maneuver. As we look into the future, as we grow the traffic volumes to counter background growth, as we then add in the actual traffic generated by Quick Check, which again, it comes largely from the roadway network itself, it's people on their way to work, on their way home from work, or generally just out and about traveling for the most part, because it is a convenience use, their trips are more so diverted from the roadway network than they are added to it, you know, during a typical trip to Quick Check. When we add in those trips, that rerouting of traffic, so to speak, maybe you come in on Rutgers, but you want to ultimately get back across the bridge, you leave on Portland, so we're shifting that vehicle around to ultimately come, you know, at the traffic signal, make the left turn. We still continue to provide very similar levels of service, no substantial degradations at any of these approaches. Ultimately, with the Quick Check here, traffic is going to flow very, very similar to how it does today. And so, we see that there's the backups on Stevens, so be it, that's why we designed the access the way we have, but ultimately, no substantial impact to the roadway network, right? Quick Check, as a whole, it's, it can't solve every traffic problem, but it's certainly not going to have any ill effect toward the roadway network. To that end, we do require the county approval, we are working with the county as far as any of their stipulations, when we met with them, they're very interested in pedestrian upgrades, we met with them prior to them putting in the ramps, they put in the ramps, we're going to see what else they may have in mind, the striping was mentioned before, that's very typical, and may be required by the county to do that. Ultimately, we'll have to agree to whatever the county stipulates with respect to improvements, but overall, you know, this project does not create any real traffic detriment to the roadway network, you know, Quick Check fits in very well with the traffic volumes and the flow, and I think the key here is the access management plan of the site itself, and we're limiting those left turns on Rutgers, we're making sure we're not adding new cars out into Stevens, and we're focusing those movements more toward where we have an actual traffic signal established, and with that, now I think that this will operate very effectively within the roadway network and street grid that we have out here today.
Thank you, that's all we have on the chair.
Any other questions for the board? No? Public? Mr. Grant Antoni?
Yes, there are a couple portions.
We can use the mic, sir, we can't hear you.
Mr. Frank Antoni, when you did your traffic study, did you take into consideration that subdivision of property on the north side is going to be some high-density housing which is going to add to the traffic?
So the answer is yes, and in fact, our firm is preparing those site plans and doing the traffic studies, so you might see me in a little while, but the yes, that development is factored into our study and what the impacts and findings are likely to be, we're still working through the development plan, they haven't made their application, but we'll let them know.
You already know how many traffic is that project going to produce?
Right, so based on the schematics, the draft plans that we're still working through, right, I have a reasonable understanding of the future traffic generated by that size project that we're considering.
They're not testifying for that project, basically. It's for this project.
Well, this is part of it, they said the subdivision, and they're talking about that tonight.
No.
We'll have to come, we'll see another application.
Just change in the law.
It's critical to this project, and we know how much more traffic that project is going to be done by subdivision of this project. We know you're going to be putting residential up there, and I think at this point, you know, we can't go later until we even know about it, I think we know, because like the gentleman said, Rutgers Street, I mean, yeah, Rutgers Street is a virtual parking lot from 7th to about 10th, and in the afternoon. I've been working for the last month on the house, the first house, when you come over the bridge, it's impossible for me to get out of that driveway, impossible, nobody lets you up, it's a steady flow of traffic.
Mr. Frank Antoni's question to the witness, though, was, is he aware of the development?
Right.
He said he was, and his projections are based on that awareness, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, do you have other questions, sir?
My question was, did he do an actual study of how many more vehicles in ingress and egress will be from that site? It wasn't a court, we know that, and he knows that there's going to be a development. Did this traffic study include the future?
He answered that question.
Well, okay, it's the way he answered, it wasn't clear, and the way he answered, I don't believe that's included in this study.
But I also want to just state for the record that the witness never said that Rutgers Street was a virtual parking lot.
I said that.
Yeah, but you said he said it, he didn't say it, you said it.
No, I said, I'm glad he acknowledged the heavy traffic on there.
Well, no, he didn't say that, but he did acknowledge the heavy traffic, now you're saying, that sounds fine now.
There's another thing that we can ask, the council members are here, the intersection of Main and Rutgers, the state, I think the council said that the state was going to redo it, so we can eliminate the problem of coming up Academy and going around Stevens and all that. That was set at a town meeting, but then about a month or two ago, I'm working on that house over there, and the state was there, and I approached the gentleman there, and they were there doing, taking some specs, so I mean, that I had firsthand knowledge. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
The state's going to change the intersection, so you can come over and make a left turn lane?
Yes.
Is that something that the state has told you is going to happen?
That is something that we've been made aware of through the municipality, and as far as I know, they're still working through all of that design funding and all of that criteria, that's separate from it.
If I could address that.
Maybe I can answer.
Oh, go ahead.
Because I'm, and Brian's here also, but I've actually, the state has hired a consultant to do the work, they're doing traffic counts now, many, and so, and they've asked me for a utility map, so the state is following through and working on coming up with plans to redo that intersection.
Yeah, I said, I spoke directly with them when that crew was down there, so that we know they're going to do, hopefully, and then the other thing I-
What was the question on that one? What was the question on that one?
The question is, was he aware that the state is going to eliminate the problem of coming up? Is he aware of that, that's all?
If I could just interject, our redevelopment agreement with the municipality will address an off-track, it's called an off-track fair share contribution by Quick Check toward that intersection improvement. So, yes, we're very much aware, and we'll be contributing toward the cost of it.
And the last thing, in your traffic study, you mentioned something about Stevens Street, the traffic on Stevens Street, is there any recommendations you could make towards improvement, some of the problems there?
I think the best recommendation is the one being put forward by the state, where you move the left turns to Main, where they essentially are coming from, right? It's currently operating as a jug handle, where you're on Main, you get off Main to go onto Academy, then Stevens, and then you make a left. If we could keep that left turn movement just on Main, directly onto Rutgers, that'll alleviate the substantial majority of Stevens' left turn traffic.
All right, well, the other recommendation, which I made to Chief Mennekini almost a year ago, and he hasn't, he says you've got to get council approval, Stevens Street, you got a problem with the national siding. All right, I'll use that in some way, some other.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, everyone, again, Michael Sheldon, 42nd Place Street. I was very happy to hear the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Memora, acknowledge that Quick Check has an off-track fair share commitment to helping improve the traffic situation at that pivotal intersection of Main and Rutgers Street. Over the last couple of months-
Is that a question?
Yeah, I'm about to, over the last couple of months, this board and the council codified the revised redevelopment plan for this block, and buried in the verbiage of that redevelopment plan was an obligation part of the developers, developers to help remediate that traffic problem, specifically that intersection of Rutgers and Main Street. And as the experts have testified, you know, in the very near future, if this redesign of that intersection succeeds, the jug handle problem involving Academy and Stevens Street will hopefully finally be resolved at one last, but then that leads to the following question, right now, Stevens, that's that one section of Stevens Street, adjacent to this property, is the only part of Stevens Street that's one-way, it's one-way south. So, in the future, if the jug handle problem is-
I don't want to go into ifs and buts, what is my question?
Well, I want to make sure that everyone is aware of, down the road, once-
But down the road doesn't help us right now.
Well, you know, you're the planning board, you're, again, you're supposed to be cognizant of the impact that this project will have now and down the road.
They are, we are, we got, we get it, so what's the question?
All right, I'm about to utter it. If, once the jug handle is removed, will there be a change in that one-way restriction on Stevens Street? Now you no longer really have a need to do the one-way circulation.
You did a succinct question there, the question was, if it's changed, right?
Right.
Is there going to be a change to the exit and on?
Will that section of Stevens Street become-
They would have to come back, they would have to come back and amend their site plan and ask for that change.
It's not part of this application.
Not.
Nor is the council doing it right now, so the answer's no.
I mean, right now, for the current situation, this is what they proposed, if the situation on the streets change, they would have to come back and ask for a change in the ingress and egress on the street, and then that would be considered by the board at that time.
All right, well, granting this approval as is right now, without contemplating what the impact could be if that street does get reverted back to two-way, it may be too late at that point to affect any changes, because all of this concrete work, everything else will be in place.
But it'll be their dollar if they want to change it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm glad that Quick Check is also going to help the town finally resolve that intersection problem, but I just hope that there aren't any unintended consequences, that fixing one problem won't inadvertently cause another one, so I just wanted to get on the record here, if anyone had any advanced knowledge that there might be some consideration of making that section of Stevens Street, once again, two-way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, wait, Mr. Harris says something?
When you met with the county, did they share with you any plans, they want to redo that signal on Portland and Rutgers, did they share anything with you?
They have not, ever. When we met with them, it's quite some time ago, but they may not share any specific group requirements.
I met with the county and their consultant colleague before COVID, that they want to redo that intersection, that, so, I haven't seen anything since, I think maybe they want to share something with us.
It may come up as we make that county application.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, see no hands, our next witness, please.
To conclude, just a very quick punctuation point by our planner, who promised you to be brief.
John, had I known it was you, I would have told you.
The word brief, I get it.
Do you swear a testimony shall give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Give us your name and business address for the record.
Sure, hi to everyone, John McDonough, MC, capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H, business address 101 Gibraltar Drive, over in Parsippany, New Jersey.
And I believe Mr. McDonough has already been accepted as an expert here as a planner.
Please, sir, you accept your credentials.
John, just, how does this project look square with the redevelopment plan that the town has adopted?
Well, we have good predicate before my planning conclusion here, which is going to be that this application is certainly consistent with good planning, and it takes us back to the case law that's gone all the way up to the Supreme Court, I actually lived that case, the Randolph Town Center case, which was a fully conforming plan, and actually got denied on the grounds that it was not consistent with good planning, the Supreme Court basically said if it complies with the ordinance, the essence of good planning is rooted in your ordinance, and in that regard, it is consistent with good planning. Kudos to this board, kudos to the community for what is a very well-written and intended redevelopment plan, to eliminate blight, to eliminate stagnation, which is at the heart of all redevelopment applications, to create an attractive gateway element to your community here, to repurpose underutilized land, and kudos to our applicant here that has followed your redevelopment plan to a T, from a use standpoint, from a bulk standpoint, the height, the coverage, the setbacks, the parking, all are fully compliant with your ordinance requirements as defined in the redevelopment plan. And then, most importantly, the design elements that are really going to define the look of this project here, and how it presents itself to the public realm. You've got good design elements cooked into that redevelopment plan, the applicant has hit them all, architecturally, landscape architecturally, and a landscape architect as well, if we want to talk about those nice flowers. Importantly, for our interested party, a zelkovia tree is the spin-off of the American Elm, which used to dot a landscape here in the United States and New Jersey 100 years ago, it died off by a blight, but it's a wineglass-shaped tree, so it does have excellent clearance through the bottom, it's not like some of those pin oaks that you see, which actually have branches that go down, these branches go up, so there'll be excellent visibility and excellent, I'll say, framing of this building with the plan selection that's been proposed, so you're going to like it when it's all done, and I think what you saw in those renderings is clearly what you'll get. I was happy to hear our interested party talk about three other Quick Checks, I was the planner on all three of them, this applicant delivers, this is a, let's say, a well-oiled machine, it is tested in the real world, it works very, very well, and I think the projects that are out there speak for themselves, so, all things said, again, this is a very good application, there are no deviations, I'll say lastly, kudos to your professional, who took a very good plan and made it even better, and I think we've landed at a spot now where certainly from a statutory standpoint, approval is warranted, and even from a practical standpoint, this is just going to do very positive things for the area and the neighborhood. I think that's the explanation.
Thank you. Still have to open for questions, though.
Yes, any questions? Does the public have any questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you, with that, I don't think you need to hear anything more from me, so I will wave closing statement, and just respectfully ask for approval, thank you, and again, subdivision and preliminary and final site plan.
That's right. And summation, something? And from the public, when we get a summation, yes, Mr. Frank Antoni?
Please raise your right hand, you swear a testimony shall give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please give us your name and address.
Zepson Frank Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue in Belleville. I just want to reiterate one more time my support for the project, I think it's a very positive asset for the township of Belleville. My question is, I don't know if this project has anything to do with Stevens Street, I think the traffic engineer spoke about it, but there's a recommendation, it's a one-way, we have national siding, which I've been dealing with for 50 years, we have a problem there, there's trucks there loading up, this has to stay- This has to stay a one-way, first of all. Secondly, I've suggested to the chief that it's 29 feet wide, this street there. If we leave the east side eight feet parking lane, we got 21, we have two 10-and-a-half-foot lanes, it's a simple solution, I told the chief, stripe the street, just to right. This is a right-turn lane, a lot of times I'm getting supplies from national siding, which is on the east side, and I have to make a right. Well, just come down in one lane, and everybody blocks up, they can't make the left lane, and everybody is blocked up for 15, 20 minutes. Simple, it's a gallon of paint for two lines and the arrows, right turn. So I don't know if that's part of, if Quick Check has anything to do with it. I believe it's a township responsibility. I don't know why the chief needs council approval, like he told me, but I brought it to them several times. So we have two council members, I don't know if they can answer it, and if it's part of the, with Quick Check, could we solve it? That's a simple, another simple solution that we keep saying, oh, we hire consultants, we have to inform a committee and all that. It's, it's two-hour paint job. So I don't know if I can get an answer from that. Does anybody have any knowledge of the applicant, have any knowledge?
Can you answer that?
No, I wasn't aware that you approached the chief about that.
Well, he said he was gonna talk council, like I said, I've grown a couple of times, you've seen me address the chief when he sits here. Meetings, some of the, I even draw a, a paper sketch for him to do there. So two councils, the mayor and the council, is it an idea you would consider?
It's an idea that sounds great.
Yes.
We have a traffic division, our police department, they have to do a study, they make a recommendation to us, as you know, Mr. Frant Antoni, then we amend the ordinance. We don't bring it up out of the gate. Uh, it has to be a traffic study, it's done by our traffic bureau, they make a recommendation, we vote to do it, they then implement. It really doesn't have much to do with it.
All right, well, now you're aware of it, and I think it'll also be a help to these, uh, the Quick Check, uh, because the people, they have an entrance on Stevens Street. So if you had that lane, that right-turn lane, they would free it up, they can get in there rather than be backed up waiting in the, the traffic to get into their place. So I think it would help, Quick Check will be a help for the township of Bellevue. That's my suggestion, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Sheldon?
Please raise your right hand, you swear a testimony, show gives you the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I, Michael Sheldon, 47th Floyd Street. I just wanna start by saying that, um, as a lifelong educator, as a former trustee for the Bellevue Board of Education, I just personally find it very sad that we've lost one of our schools, especially considering that last September, our superintendent, uh, for the community, that not only are we at the breaking point with our current schools, but the most recent demographic study by YHOL Associates is now forecasting at least another 268 students to be added within the next few years. So Dr. Tamco has already begun to sound the alarm. Where are we going to put all of these students? Unfortunately, the block for school number one, all intent purposes, has been lost for perpetuity. So instead of having children beginning their educational careers, uh, at this place, it's gonna be replaced by hoedies and yodels and gasoline cells. Life is what it is, market forces are gonna dictate what happens here. But, um, as far as your approval of this application is concerned, please make sure, as the testimony tonight has reiterated, that the entrance and exit on Rutgers Street ha, is properly resolved before Mr. Di Lorenzo and others give permits, make sure that whatever channellized, and I like the, the, the new nomenclature that I've run tonight, with these channellized entrances and exits are, especially at that position, are properly designed so that we don't have endless serious accidents taking place at that intersection. And, uh, just to reiterate what Mr. Frant Antoni said, um, that exit point of Stevens Street onto Rutgers, he's been asking for years, and I fully support him, the town needs to stripe that, that particular end point of Stevens Street where...
Just long form for that.
Right, right, so the, the, well, but the, you know, the middle, the right lane would be for the right part, would be right turns only. The middle section would be for left turns only, and as it's currently exists, I believe there is, it is parked, there's a parking zone on the east side, there's no parking on the west side of that section of Stevens Street. But I believe there is limited parking allowed on the east side of that section of Stevens Street. But, you know, all of us are supposed to be working together, both the developer, uh, the board, and the citizens, to hopefully make significant improvements and to track that police situation as part of Bellevue. This is something else you guys need, need to address. So please, at one last, ask the council and the police department, the DPW, to get in there and do the necessary striping of Stevens Street. And with that said, welcome to Bellevue.
Any other? See none, I will close this portion.
Madam Chair, the, uh, I just wanna bring up before we get to a point on it, these are, these are the items that I wrote down that were discussed as conditions. One would be no ancillary businesses on-site. Two would be that they would have to provide for the easement, to provide for the maintenance of the welcome to Bellevue sign. Three is that if employees, mayor, this one I, I took from what you were saying, although I'm not entirely sure this is what you were intending, so correct me if I'm wrong, that if employees are on-site after hours, that the exterior lighting would be turned off around the site to dissuade patrons from coming to the site. Four, that they would, uh, Mr. Harretts mentioned the streets, streetscape, that they would comply with the street state ordinance. And five, that they would work with the county to provide a deterrent to left turns on Rutgers Street. Yes? Yes, I already, it's, thank you, I already had that listed, but, yes, they would, they would have to enter into a redevelopment agreement. Anyone else?
All right.
Good?
Yes.
Make a motion.
Second motion to approve.
Chairman Donnerato? Yes. Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Graviano?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
And Mr. Donnigan?
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate you guys.
Can I get a, uh, motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
All the favors!